Going to start out with the Chestnut Ridge Middle School Ukulele Club. Ms. Bennecke? Yes.
Okay, so I give it, you can play this one. First of all, we want to thank you for buying these from my school, from my club. Thank you. Sixteen of these, which is really nice, and they're really nice sound. They actually sound like a real instrument, which is nice. And we've been meeting for ten weeks because, of course, when in September, if your ukulele club, please play at the board offices, yeah, we have to double up on our lessons. So they've had ten lessons, and we're going to play Stand By Me, and if we have time, we'll play Hey Ho. And I want you to look at this big screen over there. It'll tell you what chords, or maybe you could look up there, to play. The first chord is a C, which is your third finger on this note. That's a C chord. Every time you see C, just play a C for us. C, right, C.
I missed where she said it was a C.
Third finger, that's a C chord.
Apparently worried about me becoming famous.
C, A, Y, and F.
I don't care how old I get, this movie still makes me cry. This is all, I love this movie.
I won't cry, I won't cry, no, I won't. Stay up here, just as long as you stand, stand by me. Darling, darling, stand by me, oh, stand by me, oh, stand by me. Standing by us, huh?
Wow.
I didn't know how much time you had. We had one more if you had time. If you don't, no, okay, let's do Hey Ho, that will be done. Hey Ho. We wanted to play for you, so I don't know where best place to be, but there's. All right, I'm ready to do Hey Ho, ready? Two, there's only two chords for Hey Ho. Okay, first you play this. I think you're right, dear. I could go on, my dear. I could bust a chart down, I'd be standing up and down. Stand by me. I should be standing next to you. I love you, you're my sweetheart. I love you, you're my sweetheart. So, yeah, we're here now. I love you, you're my sweetheart. I love you, you're my sweetheart. So the idea is to introduce musical instruments to the kids, and then from here, they can just take off. You did a great job, guys.
Awesome.
Sit down here, Doug.
All right, we have some certificates for you. I'm going to have Eddie help me here. I'm going to read one, and then we'll say the names, okay? Yes, please. If you guys can all come up here, if you'd like.
A circle in the background.
Yeah, we'll end up taking a picture as well. So, yeah, you guys can all come up.
I'll come up here.
Yes, please.
Come on, guys.
All right, we'll file right behind Eddie. He'll hand you your certificate. All right, I'm going to read one. Chestnut Ridge Ukulele Club. The certificate is presented to Chestnut Ridge student in recognition of being a member of the Chestnut Ridge Middle School's inaugural ukulele club. Learning how to play an instrument is an achievement that can bring years of happiness to a person's life. Your hard work, dedication, and willingness to try something new is a credit to you, and we appreciate that you have shared your talents with the Board of Education. Presented this thirtieth day of October 2023, Dr. Eric Hibbs, Superintendent, Ms. Carol Chiller, Board President. Congratulations, guys. Okay?
Alexia Arbello.
Yep. All right, ready? Alexia Arbello. All right. John Coyle. Leila Glemser. Matt Gorman. Isis Smith. William Twaddell. Eileen Xu. And Ms. Toni Bennecke. All right, we should probably, um, can somebody take a picture of the group? We'll get the group together real quick. You got it? You got it? Yeah.
Oh, okay, come on, Eddie. Where's your ukulele? We'll go get one, come on. I had Eddie when he was in Chestnut Ridge.
All right.
You guys ready?
All right, ready? One, two, three, one more. One, two, three, got it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That was fun. Thanks, sweetheart.
Stay at the front of me? Oh.
Ukuleles? Ukulele?
I was very disappointed, Carol, getting more beautiful ukulele.
I'll collect all these back, and we'll bring them back. Okay, so pack up, everybody. Thank you, Karen. Thanks, everybody.
Chestnut Ridge Orchestra, speaking of Mrs. Bennecke.
Yeah, we're going to have the presentation, right?
Yes.
All right. Next up, real quick.
Chestnut Ridge Orchestra, speaking of Mrs. Bennecke, performed at the Park a couple weeks ago, too.
It was amazing, I was there, yeah.
They were absolutely amazing, so we're so lucky we have such a good music program.
Yes, absolutely. Next, maybe not as fun as the ukulele presentation, but we're going to go for it. We have the district assessment presentation. Dr. Nathan, hard act to follow, sorry about that.
Yep.
And cratchen.
And guys, these are all loaded into Board Docs, too, right? Okay, so if you want to pull it up in Board Docs, they're all there as well.
Yeah, also, if anyone wants a paper copy or a scanned QR code, you have to go to the point as well.
Thank you. Okay, well, you weren't kidding, that was a tough act to follow. Good evening. Mrs. Gerber and I have the pleasure and responsibility of sharing our annual district testing report. This report will include information on NJSLA, AP, our Advanced Placement Assessments, the DLM, SAT, as well as access for our English language learners, which is a collective name for WIDA's suite of summative English language proficiency assessments, and newer to the assessment suite, the NJGPA, the standardized test given to our eleventh grade students. An important concept to keep in mind during this presentation is how data is utilized. Data is a source of information to help our teams generate questions and wonderings as we continue our strategic goal work in district. It is also important to be mindful that our students' stories are told through a plethora of resources and artifacts, so we strive within district to create data stories around each of our students. It is at the student level where data is the most impactful. This report is district level, and sharing can be limited based on the number of students in a cohort. When a cohort is too small, data cannot be shared to ensure confidentiality. As always, when we have an opportunity to speak with the board and the public, it's a great opportunity to learn together. We're going to show a clip from Todd Rose. He's a researcher and author of the book End of Average. We're just going to play a small portion now, and we'll play a little bit more towards the end.
Please welcome to the TEDx Sonoma County stage, Todd Rose.
It's 1952, and the Air Force has a problem. They've got good pilots flying better planes, but they're getting worse results, and they don't know why. And for a while, they blamed the pilots, they even blamed the technology, and they eventually got around to blaming the flight instructors, but it turned out that the problem was actually with the cockpit. Let me explain. Imagine you're a fighter pilot. You're operating a machine that in some cases can travel faster than the speed of sound, and where issues between success and failure, sometimes life and death, can be measured in split seconds. If you're a fighter pilot, you know that your performance depends fundamentally on the fit between you and your cockpit, because after all, what good is the best technology in the world if you can't reach the critical instruments when you need them the most? But this presents a challenge for the Air Force, because obviously, pilots are not the same size. So the issue is, how do you design one cockpit that can fit the most individuals? For a long time, it was assumed that you could do this by designing for the average pilot. That almost seems intuitively right. If you design something that fits for the average-sized person, wouldn't it fit most people? It seems right, but it's actually wrong. And sixty years ago, an Air Force researcher, Gilbert Daniels, proved to the world just how wrong this really is and what it was costing us. Here's how he did it. He studied over four thousand pilots, and he measured them on ten dimensions of size, and he asked a very simple question. How many of these pilots are average on all ten dimensions? The assumption was that most of them would be. Do you know how many really were? Zero. Gilbert Daniels proved there was no such thing as an average pilot. Instead, what he found was that every single pilot had what we call a jagged size profile, right? Means not, it means, it means you're not, no one's at the same on every dimension, and this makes sense. Just because you're the tallest person doesn't mean you're the heaviest, doesn't mean you have the broadest shoulders or the longest torso. But this is tricky, because if every pilot has a jagged size profile, and you design a cockpit on average, you've literally designed it for nobody.
The answer was an adjustable cockpit. Later in this presentation, we will link this back to our students and our learning environments, as Todd Rose does well in his research and in his book, The End of Average. What is key to remember now is that averages were never meant to describe any one student. Our students, like those pilots, are complex, multifaceted individuals with unique strengths and areas to set goals around. Mrs. Gerber will begin with our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment results.
Thank you, Dr. Nathan. And for those of you who may have some difficulty seeing the upcoming slides, once again, for the board members, they are loaded into Board Docs. We do have a form back here that you can scan into your QR code, and we have hardcover packets for anybody who doesn't have access to anything to read it through the QR reader. So in the NJSLA, we administer this assessment in ELA for grades three through nine, and in math, in grades three through eight. Algebra I is also assessed, and in science, we assess students in grades five, eight, and eleven. Basically, this assessment provides state comparative data. Displayed on this slide are the proficiency levels with a range of one to five, where a four and a five are considered passing in New Jersey. So you want students to either meet expectations or exceed expectations. We begin with the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment in ELA for 2023. On the left is the grade level, and then each score shows the percentage for the district and then the state. So you'll see grades three through nine listed on the far left. The columns circled in red illustrate our proficiency levels of those of us versus the state. This slide displays the total percentage of students scoring in levels one through five. Our district is on the top, starting with grade three for the far left, and New Jersey as a state appears on the bottom. So if you're looking at the color comparisons, that kind of helps you see where we compare to the state. It's the same information from the chart from the previous slide, but it allows you to see it in a more visual way. So you can see from top to bottom, we mirror the state's achievement, but as we generate questions around this data, we can dig into numbers further, as we are above the state in grades fourth through seventh in ELA, we're close to the state in grade three, and we're slightly below the state in grades eight and nine. And here's our math information. Again, the circled columns represent the percentage of students who met or exceeded expectations. Some students in grade eight participated in the Algebra I assessment in place of the eighth-grade Math Assessment, thus Math VIII outcomes are not representative of grade eight performance as a whole, and that's important to consider. And students in grades eleven and twelve are not included. Again, here's how we can look at this in a visual way. So the visual display for math, we have levels one through five for our district and the state. Again, you can see the top is our district, the bottom is the state, and this time, we mirror the state in a few grades, but not all. For example, we're above the state in third and fourth grade, close to the state in fifth, but we are below the state in geometry. Moving into the NJSLA for science, one thing to note is that NJSLA for science has four proficiency levels, not five, and they're shown here. So you're looking for students who are a level three or a level four, which is proficient or advanced proficient. When we notice and wonder, these columns jump off as very few students in the state are in this category of achievement for this assessment. Again, here's an illustration of levels one through five for our district and the state. Once again, our district's at the stop, at the top, our state is at the bottom, and as we dive a big, a bit deeper, we're above in fifth grade and slightly below in eleventh grade. We are required to port on our subgroups, so I'm going to go through that section now. Subgroups refer to students who share the same characteristics or some of the same characteristics. This leaves the potential for students to overlap in characteristics and categories. So sometimes, there are some students that are representative in more than one group. This slide illustrates our subgroup performance in ELA. Here are the subgroups represented, free and reduced lunch. Then we move on to the second bar graph column of 504s. Then we move into English language learners, special education, and general education. If you're looking at this, you're going to be seeing red is not meeting, dark green is exceeding, and the light green you see is meeting. Then when we take a look at this next slide, additional displays of the data include subgroups by race, as seen here. Give you a minute to take a look at that. Moving from ELA to math, this slide illustrates our subgroup performance in math. Here are the subgroups represented again, free and reduced lunch, 504, our English language learners, special education, and on the far right is our general education students. And then for math, additional displays of the data include subgroups by race, as seen here. For the New Jersey SLA in science, this slide illustrates our subgroup performance. Here the subgroups represented again are free and reduced, 504, ELL, special education, and general education students. Keeping in mind that some students may fall into multiple categories. Additional displays of the data include subgroups by race, as indicated on this slide. At this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Nathan to walk you through the NJGPA.
Okay, so moving into the newest assessment within this presentation, the NJGPA. Here is some background on this slide. So the NJGPA was administered for the first time in the spring of 2022, administered to eleventh-grade students in math and English language arts only, and for the 23-24 school year, NJGPA scores will count towards graduation with this first class in 2024. There are only two categories for NJGPA as displayed here, Level One and Level Two, labeled not yet graduation-ready and graduation-ready. On the right is graduation-ready according to this assessment for the state and for our district. We are higher than the state in English language arts with ninety percent graduation-ready, and slightly higher than the state in math with fifty-eight percent graduation-ready according to this assessment. Here is a visual of those numbers still for the NJGPA. Here you can see our district is on the top, and the state is on the bottom. And here are the percentage of federally reported subgroups by race as identified in this slide. Green is indicating graduation-ready. And here, the percentage of federally reported subgroups, including free and reduced lunch, 504, special education, and general education, have been identified on this slide. Again, green indicating graduation-ready. We're moving into our Advanced Placement Testing, also known as AP. Here's some background information. Administered in high school, typically our juniors and seniors, and it provides national comparative data. To summarize this slide, 351 students took the AP tests. Sixty-one percent passed, receiving a three, four, or five, as seen in the red circle. The results in some sections are omitted for any tested areas with less than ten students. Our alternative assessment is called the Dynamic Learning Map, or DLM. Some background information, students take testlets in designated subject areas. These testlets include questions from one or more of the standards that teachers use for instruction during the school year. Here you can see that nine testlets in English language arts, six to eight testlets in mathematics. six to eight testlets in mathematics, and nine testlets in science were all part of the DLM. Displayed on this slide are the proficiency levels for DLM from emerging to advanced. And here are the results. In these results, students are grouped by subject rather than grade level to improve confidentiality based on the number of students in this dataset. Score categories range from emerging to advanced. The yellow bar represents at target. Here we can see 17 students at target in English Language Arts with four students in advanced, nine students at target in math, and five students in advanced with three students at target in science. Next, we will view our SAT results. For some background, our SAT cut scores utilized for the board report come from the college board's website. Meeting is 460 in ELA or math. Our data reflects New Jersey's requirement of 440 for meeting. Here you can see SAT scores for evidence-based reading and writing. For 2023, our students had an average 544 in reading. The New Jersey State average is 543 in reading. 80% of our 11th grade students and 76% of our 12th grade students are meeting achievement levels. Here is a visual based on our performance for evidence-based reading and writing portion of the SAT. The green bars represent the percent of students in the meeting proficiency category in 11th and 12th grade and then combined grades. Here you can see SAT scores for math. For 2023, our students had an averaged 520 in math. The state average is 543. 48% of our 11th grade students and 45% of our 12th grade students are meeting achievement levels. And this slide is the visual based on our performance for the math portion of the SAT. The green bars represent our percent of students in the meeting proficiency category in 11th and 12th grade and then combined grades.
So next, I'm going to go over the access test for our English Language Learners, which is now the state has renamed our MLs, our multilingual learners. So I'll still kind of use the Ls just for the sake of our testing presentation. So access for Ls is our next and last dataset that we're going to be reviewing with you tonight for our testing report. The score provides information on students' English proficiency. So this is not a typical ELA, NJSLA type of examination. Instead, they use the WEATA model to determine and develop the access scores. So here are the proficiency levels that we're looking for when we administer the access tests. There are six levels. Just to give you a frame of reference, you need a 4.5 to be considered to be exited. Now, we do use multiple criteria for exiting, but a 4.5, which obviously is between expanding and bridging, is really when we're looking to exit students from that program. So again, this is one of multiple measures. WEATA makes the model test, but access is the state test of New Jersey, and they use that WEATA scale. So it's a progression as seen on the slide. So here's the distribution of student scores by grade band. School and district-wide trends are more meaningful as a means to evaluate long-term program impacts than a method to evaluate any one individual or draw conclusions about any particular group of students. WEATA recommends using access for Ls scores as one of multiple pieces of information that inform reclassification or exit decisions. Schoolwork, in-class assessments, and educator insights are all valuable evidence that can help provide a broader picture to understand a student's English language proficiency and development. So as you can see, on the right is our district summary of all grades. We have, just for a reference, we have about 80 ELL students throughout the district. They are housed at our magnet schools, which are Bell's, Orchard Valley, and then the high school. We do offer ELL services to our program and our program and our preschool program, but again, that's a consultative model as it's not required. But we do see a lot of exits. However, this year, we had a large rise in increase of entrance as well. So new students moving into the district.
Okay, so coming back to the end of average and how as a school district, we work to meet all our students' needs.
Here's what I mean. Even though we have one of the most diverse countries in the history of the world, and even though it's the 21st century, we still design our learning environments like textbooks for the average student. No kidding. We call it age-appropriate, and we think it's good enough. But of course, it's not. I mean, think about it. What does it even mean to design for an average student? Because a student is not one-dimensional like struggling to gifted. Students vary on many dimensions of learning, just like they vary on dimensions of size. Here are a few obvious ones. And just like size, each student, every single one of them, has a jagged learning profile, meaning they have strengths, they're average at some things, and they have weaknesses. We all do. Even geniuses have weaknesses.
So the use of multiple sources, the creation of each student's data story, and the use of assessments and platforms that help our staff and students set goals are key. Designing instruction to the edges in order to support all students, this is why we differentiate instruction, provide interventions, and offer programs to meet our students' unique needs each and every day.
So what we have listed here are some of the intervention strategies that we used since the last test administration in the spring, since these results were captured. So we've offered additional time programs. Some of that is continuing in supplemental programming or tiered support services that we offer, programs like ROAR, Elevate, and Math Supplemental. We have summer program, and then we just offered this past summer. In the elementary, we used Lit Math and SEL Camp along with Beable, iExcel, and the Spark Program for our secondary students. We've had structural changes that we put into place this fall. We've developed new pacing guides in math and ELA, and we've scaled them up and we've aligned them to link at common assessments. So that way, we can go through after a period of time and see how students are doing on the proficiency level of the standards that they've just been taught. And then we can remediate those standards right then and there and then move on into continuing our instruction so that we're better prepared for our state test and just capturing and recapturing that learning that just took place. We have revised intervention protocols for Lit Labs, or some people call it the win time, those periods that we have where we can try to put in some support for students that may need enrichment and/or remediation. We've offering professional development. We're continuing with our Eureka Math Squared coaching. This is where every K through five teacher has an opportunity to work with Eureka Math Coach from the company in terms of looking at all aspects of math, including mathematical practices. Professional development on writing where we're working with a consultant and putting in some interventions. And then also, we continue to work with our L population or ML population by offering the PSYOP model, which is the Sheltered English Observation Protocol model, which is our Sheltered English instruction. So we want our staff at Bell's, at Orchard Valley, and the high school to have that training. So when they're working with particularly newcomers or students who are, you know, need that language acquisition, they have strategies in their toolbox as a regular classroom teacher. We're going to work on integration of digital content and resources. We're vetting and examining which products best meet our needs: iExcel, Beable, and more. And always at the forefront of our thinking is, you know, our Equity Strategic Goal Work.
Okay, so we only have about 20 more slides. No, I'm kidding. It is a lot. There's a lot of assessments and really so much gratitude for our staff, our teachers, our students, our caregivers, our administrators, and the support of the board to make this happen, to have our testing run smoothly, to have our students show their achievement, for us to be able to use the data to intervene, to set goals, and to do our very best by every student that comes through Washington Township. So thank you. And thank you for supporting this presentation.
Thank you. Thank you both. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Far away, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, you go back.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you sit, then yeah.
And maybe, you know, they're not questions that need to be answered today, but... So I mean, I think the data is frankly disturbing when I look at it. We're barely at average.
Yeah.
But, and we're putting interventions in place. I guess the question would be, where do we think we should be? And how long would it take to get there? Because obviously, I don't think we want to be where we are today. I don't think we can expect miracles to be occurring overnight. I think it'd be good to set a goal, like where do we think we should be? 90% of the kids or 95% of the kids are graduation-ready, or we think we should be at this type of level? Is that an exercise that we're going to go through?
Yeah. We certainly can and will go through that. So, you know, being here a matter of months, you know, this train was already out of the station a long way before a lot of us got here. I think that we have some good points. I think we had some gains this year. I think that relooking at pacing guides was critical work. And I think Gretchen and Pam and teams and teachers did great jobs of doing that. I think that's a really big piece. I think aligning our assessments to the standards that are evaluated will allow us to pinpoint areas of weakness on a global scale or at least a district-wide scale to know where our hotspots are so we can not only address them, but also to get professional development on those standards. I think next in the hop or two, we're going to look at end-of-year and beginning-of-year assessments so that we can put those in the arsenals as well. And I think it's going to take some time to do that plan-do-check-act deming work to figure out, you know, because ideally, we now have pacing guides aligned everywhere. We have common assessments almost everywhere, not geometry, because we were doing the adoption. So geometry will come, you know, as soon as we have the adoption and the new supervisor, which will put us in a spot where we have common assessments everywhere. And then the implementation of those will allow us to see how we fare on those standards versus other standards. This data is one data point, just like a common assessment would be a data point. But what the common assessments will do is that they'll give you a window into the soul of a kid into a standard. And that, to me, is what we can't get from NJSLA or really, most of these assessments that we just get, you passed or you didn't type data on. So I think that we're excited to take a look. We're excited for the, you know, quite frankly, for some of the gains, and we look forward to tackling the challenges that come with the others. It's going to take a little bit of time, you know? And with that, it's not just all about data either, because that's not what it's about. It's also about instruction, supporting our staff, making sure that everyone's trained. It's about technology and using our online programs. And we just had a great meeting today in the IMC of the library about our ancillary programs and what we can use to support and how do we pull exiles? And what overarching reading online program do we want? And which math program can we use to target strengths versus spatial-temporal type things? So we're engaging all that work now so that we can see gains. But to long-winded answer, yeah, I mean, we can... I believe that we can design a system that will probably be able to triangulate how we'll do on state assessments. We did so in my last district with a pretty good accuracy rate. It's going to take a little bit of time to get there.
Just to reiterate, this data was from... When was this data from?
So this was, well, this was last year's data.
Last year's.
Yeah, so when they took the assessments in the 22-23 school year.
Last question, point. Some of the tools look great. Like I know, like, my kids, I used to buy them a subscription to iExcel and have them do stuff. Us providing that is great. Do we ever survey parents to... I think a challenge could be a lot of people don't even know they have it, right? Or how to use it, or how to engage, especially in the summer months. Are we going to do a survey like that sometime?
Sure, we could. And I think that, I think that what's most important for us in that work is to develop our flagship programs that we use, make sure that our staff know them inside and out, including administrative staff, because they change annually. We used to retrain all of our admin staff on all of our big programs annually and then help teachers understand what changes come, have kids understand that, and then have parent academies and PD for parents so they can understand, hey, you know, if you really want your child to work over the summer, here's the pathway to do that. One thing that we've discussed is, at the end of the year, we're going to have a list of standards in a grade level where children did or did not do well on. And allowing parents to know, listen, if you want to have a pathway in almost... I don't want to call it free tutoring, because that'll get misconstrued. If you want a pathway to helping your child engage over the summer, here is a list of standards from all the common assessments. Here is all your logins. Here are your directions. And then you can have your kids just work on those standards and work over the summer. And I think that my parents will appreciate that piece. So yeah. Yeah.
I have a quick question. Once a student passes like their test of record, right? How is that captured in the numbers? Like, do we... I don't know how we handle it, but I'm saying, you know, do we have students... I can imagine if you know that you've passed your test of record, then why would you, when you go to take these tests? I can't imagine someone just sitting there and just doing whatever. But I'm just trying to figure out and understand, how does that work? If a child's passed, do they continue to take these tests every year? Is this a requirement? I just don't know. Some of these, I'm not like the NJGPA, like I've never heard of that. I know they did it over the past year, but how does that work with those students?
Different assessments have different requirements. So yes, they may still need to take an assessment even if they've met their graduation pathway assessment already. So that could have some bearing on motivation levels. A student needs to pass the assessment, one of the graduation pathway assessments in order to graduate. So there is also a motivating factor there. But we try to encourage every student to do their very best every year.
Do we let the students know once they've passed or no? We just kind of like leave it lingering because we want them to continue to take the test? I mean, I'm just trying to understand some of the dips. I'm just trying to understand why they're dipped. So I don't know if that's a question you can answer now, but just curious.
Yeah, and they are different assessments. So that could have some bearing on the variability that we can see in the data. But yes, students are informed of their results.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else? No? All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right, we're moving on to school and community relations. I believe, Dr. Gregor, you're filling in tonight?
Thank you, Dr. Gregor.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We start out with Financial Aid Night. The Washington Township High School Counseling Department invites interested high school seniors and their parents to an informative and important virtual presentation designed to assist in understanding the college financial aid process on Thursday, November 2, 2023. Michael Chando, Executive Director of Admissions and Financial Aid at Rowan College of South Jersey, will facilitate the workshop on the free application for federal student aid, FAFSA, and the federal student aid, FSAID. Check out our website at wtpss.org for a link to the Zoom presentation. The Equity Council, Washington Township's Public Schools Equity Council, is eager to... The Equity Council, Washington Township's Public Schools Equity Council, is eager for your feedback on the district's vision for diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. If you're interested in attending their, their November 7th, 2023 quarterly meeting, please complete the form on our website. Fall Play at Washington Township High School for the Wayoff Broadway Players will present the 2023 Fall Play, She Kills Monsters, on Thursday through Saturday, November 16th, 17th, and 18th. The show starts at 7:30 p.m. Thursday and Friday at 2 p.m. on Saturday in the Playhouse at Washington Township in the 1112 Wing. She Kills Monsters is a dramatic comedy about the world of fantasy role-playing games. It tells the story of Agnes Evans, as she comes to terms with the death of her teenage sister, Tilly. When she finds Tilly's Dungeons and Dragons notebook, she embarks on an adventure in the imaginary world that was Tilly's refuge. Tickets to the show are $12, and seating is reserved. Secure your tickets online at wthsnj/booktix.net. High School Open House. Washington Township High School is hosting its annual ninth-grade open house for incoming 24-25 freshmen on Tuesday, November 14th, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. in the school's Republic Bank Performing Arts Center. The information presentation about WTHS, I'm sorry, informative presentation, is open to all current eighth-grade students, and will include an academic symposium, activity showcase, and athletic showcase. For more information, contact Grade 9 Assistant Principal, Dr. Greg Muselli, at gmuselli@wtpss.org. We are hiring. The Washington Township Public Schools is looking to fill a number of available positions, including certified staff at all levels, technology and science teachers at the high school, bus drivers, food service workers, and secretarial staff. We offer extra pay opportunities, ongoing professional development, and five personal days per year. Go to our website and click on employment to apply today. And finally, we need subs. The Washington Township Public Schools also looking for substitute teachers and staff. Apply online at the link on our website. Retired teachers can earn $200 per day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right. Moving on to correspondence. May I have a motion to approve the correspondence as listed?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are going to move on to old business. I want to start with our Student Board of Education representative. Eddie, take it away.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Chilla. Sorry. I first just wanted to reintroduce myself to everyone. My name is Eddie Mulvihill, and I'm a senior at Washington Township High School, and I am so excited to be here in this position. I first wanted to express my passion for both education. Actually, sorry, I started submitting my Common Apps. I'm applied for as an English education major for next year.
Nice.
And I'm also very passionate for creating and fostering change. And I also, real quick, just wanted to apologize for my absence at the work session two weeks ago. I had an emergency surgery to remove my appendix two days before, and I was still kind of in, like, the era where I couldn't move yet. So, I tuned in at home, I promise. So, I'm still in the loop, but I wasn't able to do my, my report as the student.
Eddie, you need a note for that, or you could, I'm kidding.
Okay. So, so, yeah, this would be the report that I would have done while the committee reported during the work session. I intend on reporting during each of the work sessions, and for this one in particular, I'm going to use the information I gathered from the superintendent's cabinet, which took place on October 3rd of this year. So, that's what I'm going to use today. I promise I'll be brief, so we can move on.
Take your time. You're ready to be brief. Go ahead.
We, so the superintendent, superintendent's cabinet meets bimonthly, so my intention in this position is to use that information for the work session for that month, and then for the off-month of the superintendent's cabinet, holding a forum within the high school, where any student can come and express any positive emotion or feelings for specific things that they think need to be changed. So, for the superintendent's cabinet that we had earlier this month, we had about 25 students, a little bit more than that, in attendance from ninth to 12th grade, with Dr. Hibbs and Ms. Clancy. And, and we were able to hold discussions on things we wanted to see happen this year, district-wide. Some of the things, the goals are like the precedents that we stated. We wanted, we want to try to work towards a happy medium for the unit lunch at the, at the high school. We kind of shifted gears from where we were last year to this year, and we see a lot of perks, but we also noticed the downsides to those. And we also want to create, this is one of our major goals, create a system for students to feel better equipped for post-secondary planning, starting that out a lot sooner than junior year, making sure students know how important it is to pay attention to the presentations that the counselors give on navvions and things like that, and also just making sure that the junior class feels that they can go into the summer ready to complete their Common Apps, so they don't feel stressed at the beginning of the year. So, first, I just wanted to go over some of the concerns that were brought up at the meeting. None of these really reached resolution. They were more so just to be put out there. So, like I said, the major one that came up was the unit lunch this year. There's a discrepancy between the first lunch and the second lunch that can be confusing to this day, because we have a four-day rotating schedule with a different lunch on each of those days that falls on a different time, which can just be confusing for students. I know myself, I still find myself in the wrong spot a lot, and it's almost November. And we also want to find a better system for accountability of students to make sure that they are where they're supposed to be, because we have noticed that there's the largest disparity of students sitting alone at lunch, or feeling like they don't have anyone to go to. That's at the forefront right now, and it's kind of disheartening to see. So, we just kind of want to find a way to hold accountability for students more. Another concern that was brought up was the lack of office hours, or the lack of knowledge of office hours that we have at the high school. Post-COVID, we implemented a system where teachers could hold either during lunch or after school quickly, where they can meet with students, they go over things that they missed, or just things that they might need extra help on, and lunch was a really crucial factor in that. Students were able to go to their teachers any day of the week. It didn't matter. Like, now, the issue is if they have lunch one, then they're teaching during the second block, so it's just kind of confusing students, like, they don't have the proper necessities to be able to meet with their teachers. A specific student brought up a story of having a 50-plus-question test that they had to make up after school, which then was hard to schedule around the teacher because of their scheduled work time. Having another hour after school isn't always applicable for a teacher, so it's kind of working two schedules now. So, we definitely want to see something there, where we could implement a way to create a better system for office hours. Students feel that there needs to be a location or a system where they can go to decompress throughout the day as needed. We realize that the bathroom isn't always the best place to go if you're just feeling stressed, or if you need to step out for a minute. So, whether that's a system of just being in the hallway at a specific time by holding some sort of pass, or being able to go to a specific room, students would find that necessary. Like I said, just more junior-year navvions presentations, as well as greater emphasis on preparation for college or post-secondary planning, because it's kind of a lot to be thrown at students if they don't feel prepared at the beginning of the school year. And then, just on a more light-hearted note, students mentioned their, their dislike for eating cold food all the time during lunch. So, we mentioned a possibility of implementing like, a microwave system that our lovely cafeteria monitors could watch over to make sure that they're being used safely. And then, just some positive updates that we got from the meeting. I wanted to make students, as well as the community, aware of the holding room that is offered for students on Tuesday to Thursday after school. We know that it's kind of difficult with the buses, late buses not picking up until 4:15, and our school day ending at 2:10. So, for students to feel that they could still attend clubs and activities or sports quickly and have a place to go. So, just wanted to make everyone aware of that. And I believe it's in the IMC at the high school. I'm not fully 100% sure, so don't quote me, but I can get back to you on that. And also, we've seen a lot of, Dr. Hibbs mentioned, a lot of positive reinforcement and outcomes that have come with sectioning off different parts of the football stadium during football games, as they continue to be amazing our football team this year. So, that's definitely a perk for the community, to feel like our football games are a safe and really community-oriented event. And then, we also have, I'm not going to speak too much, I'm not sure how much I can talk about it, but a lot of exciting things coming to the future at Washington Township High School, new systems for the football games, and a lot of new things coming with our gyms. We'll talk about that soon. But, yeah, that's all from me now. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. I wanted to just follow up real quick on the unit lunch. It's my favorite topic.
Yeah.
So, did we, I think this was from a few meetings ago, I was asking in Power School if we could make sure on the student's schedules that we could note exactly when the lunch is, because even as a parent, like, I never know. If I ask Angela, and I'm like, are you in lunch? I don't even know, when I look in Power School, what those big blocks are. I'm not saying I need to know, but I think the students probably do, but I'm not sure. Eddie, can you confirm, if you look on your phone for Power School, does it say every day when you have lunch?
Last I checked, no, but I'll check real quick.
Okay. So, just maybe we can follow up to say, because I think it's, I've heard this now a number of times, so Eddie, thank you for bringing it up, but we need to do that.
No, mine doesn't.
But, I mean, I think the block, no, but I think it rotates, right?
Yeah, it was just the fact that, like, so, like, the block is attached to a PM class every day, so, like, right now, say it's, like, class six for me, it would say future educators, and then it would say, like, 10:30 to 12:12. And, like, it was just, like, possibly a system where it could say, like, lunch one, based off your schedule in Power School. I'm not sure how that would work, but it would definitely help a lot.
Jen, can you run point on that for me?
Yeah, I think that would help.
I don't know, I don't know what that would, what that would take. I'm not sure if that could have to be like a Power School reboot, or what that would even look like, but we can try.
That would be awesome.
Okay.
All right, cool. Anything else? Eddie, awesome. Thank you so much. Anybody have any comments, questions for Eddie? No? All right. Thank you. Old business from the board, rest of the board. Connie?
Yeah, I have old business. I just want to mention, the last week, I spent four days at the school board convention, and centered on two specific areas of teacher retention and recruitment, and the second was, was on preschool. It has come up that, from, from the members of the community, and it was kind of out there, I know we're going to be expanding our classrooms. We're going to probably go to about, what, 14 additional classrooms for pre-pay. And there was this concern out there, how are we, how are we going to pay for it, and where are we going to get space? And, you know, is there going to be a referendum? Is our taxes going to go up? Something that I learned, and this evening, I did talk to Mrs. Gerber, in the preschool grant that's going to be, be, have to be submitted by November 15th, in that grant can be written the amount of money, not grant, I keep saying grant, I mean aid. You can, a district can write, if, if you're going to rent space, you can put in the grant the cost of renting the space. You know, I think, I guess, Dr. Hibbs, you can comment. I think we're trying to rent space in another, in another district, because obviously, we don't have the capacity right now. But, I felt really good, and I was glad to be able to confirm with Mrs. Gerber that if we're going to rent space, we could put it right in that aid, and it's not going to impact, at least in Washington Township, your taxes, and, and not have to do anything like a referendum. Correct me if anything that I'm wrong, but that's what I found out at the school boards.
No, I think you're, I think you're on point. We are looking, and if I'm off of my numbers, I think I'm right. We're looking to go from, I think, 19 to 31. Does that, are those numbers sound about right, classrooms? So, one of the avenues we're exploring is leasing space at Kindle, which is in Pittman. Pittman closed two buildings. So, we're looking to essentially rent as much space as possible, and you are absolutely correct that in that aid, we can put forth everything, everything that's allowable, from security to teachers, to aides, to things, to the lease, lease payments. Gretchen, you want to, I see you leaning in. Anything you want to add?
No, I mean, that's exactly true. We can, we can put any lease amount that we want to put into the grant, because that facility would be, we already offset costs at Grenlock. So, just as a comparison, we just can't pay for any special education rooms with PEA funding. So, we take a percentage, and we, we offset, like, the custodian, the secretary, we offset things that we already use within our Grenlock Terrace with those funds. And then, in addition to that, if we were expand to an opportunity where we can lease space, because all classrooms would be PEA, that we could 100% fund those things that we need.
Did I, did I also understand it correctly? What, what happened, this is, it's, things get phased in, and the state actually tells us what our universe is supposed to be, and, and therefore, we have to, we have to go along with what we're being told we have to supply in terms of classroom space for students. Is that correct?
So, so, your universe is double your first-grade class, because they look at your first-grade class, because not everybody attends kindergarten. They look at your first-grade class, and they double it, meaning for, like, a three-year-old as a grade level, and four-year-olds as a grade level. So, double your first-grade class, which for us is roughly about 1,000, 1,000 kids. So, they've said about 90% of your universe, I think now they're going down to, like, somewhere in the 80s. We're going to be actually housing the regional meeting here, so I'll hear what their latest numbers are later this week. But, that will be the percentage of your, that's considered your universe. So, you're to fund that. And then, the square footage is really the sticky requirement. So, the room has to have a square footage of minimum of 700 square feet, and that, if it has a bathroom, that's in addition, so you would need additional square footage for that. So, if the bathroom is in the room, you're looking at 950 square feet. If you have a bathroom in the building, it does have to be in line of sight. So, you know, you have to be able to see it across the hall, down the hall. It can't be, like, around a corner. So, that limits us with the space that we have within our existing schools. And when you think about the schools that we have and their build of concrete, you really can't use any of that for knocking down walls, making rooms bigger. It, it doesn't work. And surprisingly enough, 700 square feet is very large. So, you wouldn't really think about it until you go into rooms, and I seem like I'm getting to be a pro. I can walk into a room and go, not a 700 square feet. But, you, it is, it is fairly large. So, that's the requirements that we really have to look at. That's the litmus test before we really start to engage in further conversation.
I know there was a question brought up about the distance of the school meeting at Kindle and Pittman. However, if people remember children coming from Whitney Square and down that other area towards, I'm not sure what the development's called, further down, those children are bussed to the early childhood center. So, I'm sure when busing is provided, that that'll be taken into consideration, which children go to that school, if I'm not mistaken.
So, we're, I'm, just because of what happened to us last year with agreeing to work with a provider, and then the provider pulled out at the very end. I'm very hesitant about doing the lottery this year, so that's something that we have to further discuss. But, one option we did with the lottery is we gave parents a choice. Like, here's the first choice of the site I would like to go to. I don't have a second choice. And then, you would just be put on a waitlist for your first choice, or here is my second choice, and I'm willing to go to my second choice, and so on. We are also looking at, again, working with another provider this year. So, I do have a provider that is interested in two classrooms, and I was contacted again today about one that's looking to give me one. So, that's a conversation we have to look, still work into, because they know the November 15th timeline is coming up, so providers want to have those conversations quickly and swiftly. But, for sure, right now, we're definitely looking. We haven't had any final agreements or anything like that at the Pittman location, and we are also looking at working with a provider right now. I feel confident in saying those two things.
Thank you. Follow-up question, too. I think under the aid that I understood at the, at the conference, that transportation could also be included as well. Now, the, the deadline is, what, the 14th or 15th of November? It's two weeks away, and we, we haven't, just, we haven't had, we don't have anything firm about Pittman. So, how does that work with the grant? Is there some way that we, we put money in there that we're talking about rent? Or can it be, can, can we open that grant up later, if we finally get a place to send them? How can we make sure that, as a district, we put the money in the grant to pay for the cost of sending kids elsewhere?
So, just so you're clear with the grant, the application really looks at enrollment right now, your plan, how you expect to achieve and meet certain goals that are within that plan. The budget, however, is due around our typical budget time, and that's when we would flesh out those numbers in terms of what do we need per the allocations per student that we receive.
But, transportation, just to be clear, it is not fully in, in the grant. It's not the way it works. We had a great phone call. We wanted to make sure that we had all the facts, so... We had a great phone call, we wanted to make sure that we had all the facts, so we actually called the two awesome ladies from the PEA.
Selena.
Selena, what's her rough title?
She's the fiscal specialist for the PEA.
So, she walked us through everything, and she knew that in year one, we would not be able to transport 100% of our kids. And she, she said out loud, "It's the problem, we want you to actually use space, we want you to get these kids in school, and then, you know, there is a little bit of money in there for transportation, and then we work towards more funding in the future." But they were very supportive of us using that, that space, and keeping it a school, and then getting upwards of 19 to 31, and it could be a couple more classrooms of township kids into preschool. So, that would be the goal. Yeah. Thanks Gretchen.
Thank you. Any other old business from the board? No? Okay. Motion to open to public?
Second.
Okay. Ron Lucchini?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could help me out, because I'm a little confused. Over the last, let's say, six years, I've been, I was a teacher six or seven years ago, retired. When I left, I warned Mr. Bolendorf, and I warned the Board of Education in writing that the school system was not going to do very well until we straightened out things at the top, until the people here were responsible for conducting themselves in a particular fashion where reason was respected, because it's going to trickle down to the kids if politics are dominating the school system. Okay, so he didn't listen, and neither did the board, and Mrs. Cozempel was running around dancing, trying to get her person on the Board of Education for political reasons, right, a Democrat, making themselves with this name as Children First. All right, so, we had problems, and the pandemic came along, and today, we're in a situation where I think, just based on what Mr. La Liberty asked in relation to these test scores, we have to do better. Recently, a friend of mine, who was a pretty sharp guy when I was back in high school, he sent me some information, and according to U.S. World of News, or some, whatever it was, it had the link, I looked at it, I checked it out, we were ranked 355 out of 400 and something schools in New Jersey, high schools, this was a high school ranking, all right? 355. So, I said, "Okay, rankings can be, you know, based on certain things, and then maybe another ranking would have us different." But after I sent that back to him privately, he sent back another one from some other place, and we were at like 3, I think we had a little better there, 348 or something like that. And then another friend of mine, because we were carbon copying each other, sent one back, again, in the bottom third, all right? The bottom third, and our demographics, okay? When you talk about the demographics of Washington Township, okay, we're not Haddonfield, but we're not at the bottom, we're not at 355 in terms of demographics. So, it's a little difficult to accept anyone who would say that we don't have to do a little bit better, all right? Now, as I become to these meetings, the last three or four months, or five months, six months, however long you've been here, Dr. Hibbs, if I came to a meeting, especially with this Angelina Chilla, when they were saying that she shouldn't be on the Honor Society, and that Mrs. Chilla was out for her own kid, and the whole nine yards, I came to those meetings, it was obvious that there are some board members who think that we need to do better, and that we need change, right? If you're at 355, you'd have to change something, all right? And then there are some board members, Mrs. Baker, Mr. Ross, Mr. Ross has gone as far as joining, after he ran against Children's First, he's really now part of Children's First, although they changed their name, because we're all supposed to be stupid enough to believe it, now they're Schools First, all right? And there are some board members who don't want change, who have, had sat there and listened to these high school teachers who were coming up here, who were ranked number 355, coming up here and talking about a kid in, in, in public, a student, which none of you would like to have happen to your kid, and they're, and they're talking about how things shouldn't change, basically. So, this Board of Education election coming up is very important to me, all right? And when I'm done, I would like the board members to comment as to whether you think we need change or we don't. And I think it's really pretty cut and dry now. We have three candidates who seem to accept change, they're not all the same. Mr. La Liberty is entirely different from Bonnie Moreno, in terms of one is a conservative, and one's a liberal, but they both agree on one thing, that we need to do better, okay? And I think that they, that mentality, before you even start about their qualifications, okay? Their qualifications, and Mr. Bolizaro's far exceed the other three people who are running, Mr. Ross, this guy Woodington, and Mrs. Bloom, or whatever, their qualifications far exceed theirs, but that's not even the point. The point is, they agree that we need to have change, all right? And that's what I want from the Board of Education. I want to know if it's been Hibbs's fault, and Chilla's fault, the last six months that we fell into this 355 hole, or it's been the last six years?
Okay.
And that's going to do it for me, thank you.
I got to stop, thank you. Okay.
I mean, I think the majority of us, I mean, we've all, I think we do want change, I think Dr. Hibbs coming on is a step in the right direction by far. I mean, we were talking about the test scores, everything that you spoke to on your interview pretty much spoke to student achievement, growth, assessment, you know, student achievement you're passionate about, it's obvious, so we are, have made, I mean, made a lot of changes the past, what, three months?
Yeah.
I mean, a lot. And I think that's the direction we have to go. I can't stand, we've always done it that way, kind of mentality, why, if it doesn't work, you have to change it, so, but people don't like change often, so I think we have to just move past that and get where we need to go.
Sorry, man. I think I've spoken a lot about the need for change, but I think it's not just academically, you know, I think it's, times have changed, just in the ability to attract and retain talent, and I think we've incorporated that into our board goals, you know, recognizing that change. And I think Dr. Hibbs had good messages about that when we hired you, and you're putting plans in place, and now it's giving you the support you need to make those things happen.
Yeah. I think, I think that this is an exceptionally good district that can get a lot better in, in specific ways, you know? And we see, you know, where we're below the state average on assessments, we shouldn't be below the state average, we just should not be, in any way, shape, or form, and I think I said that in my interview. And, you know, since, since we've been together, you know, I came in May, we started conversations immediately about strengthening pacing guides, and creating pacing guides at the secondary level. A pacing guide is a blueprint for how you're going to teach, and the standards you're going to assess, and when. And then we created common assessments to go along with those pacing guides. Right, right away, that strengthened our pathway immensely. So, we're going to keep taking those steps, but I think there's a lot of things that we have to address. You know, we talked, we talked today, you know, I can't tell you specifics about it, we talked about, you know, the culture and the fighting that's happening at the high school. We're going to strengthen the code of conduct, you know? We didn't have certain things in our code of conduct, holding kids responsible for good and proper behavior. And if you're going to have an egregious fight, probably not going to be at the high school for very long, because we can't have egregious fights at the high school. You know, if you are standing there videoing a fight, and you're disseminating it, you're going to have massive consequences, because that just adds to a horrible culture. So, I think in a lot of ways, there's a lot of things that we have to address, piece by piece by piece, and we will do that. You won't always see it all, because you just won't, but there's a lot of work to do, top to bottom, from what we look like, to what we believe in, to our test scores, to our kids believing in what they can do, and, you know, and that all starts with, that all starts with the culture, and it needs to be a strong, positive culture, where we have accountability, but we also help kids believe that they can do anything in this world, and that we're going to help them on their way to that possibility, so.
I also think having the cabinet and listening to the kids, and what they're seeing, and what they need is very important, to foster those changes from what's happening in our schools.
Yeah. And Eddie's, Eddie's on point, I mean, he, he spoke very well. You know, if kids don't know where they're supposed to be, that's a problem, and we can address that, for sure. We knew that unit lunch last year did not work, because having 2,200 kids eat at once is just a logistical nightmare, right? So, we took steps this year to try to separate it, it'll probably always be an evolvement every year, right? You know, and that's awesome that Eddie is comfortable enough to, to talk to us and the other kids about the fact that we don't want kids sitting alone, because we don't want kids sitting alone. You know, I love the fact that they felt comfortable in that meeting to tell us that they hate cold food, and can we please get a microwave? And my response to that was, "Heck yeah, you can have a microwave." I went right to Janine, and I'm like, "Please get me microwaves, because these kids need to heat up their food." You know, that, that kind of stuff, we can, we can address, so Eddie did a great job.
I mean, I, yeah, 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 go ahead.
I don't want to take away either that we have great people. I mean, just because we need to change and evolve, and continue to do better, doesn't mean we have good people. And I think we recognize we've got a lot of good, hardworking people.
So much good. There's so much good, yeah. And I, I think that's, that's probably the hardest part, not only about being new, but I don't want to be perceived as, as thinking that I know better, or I'm pretentious, or that we are not great. Township is amazing, it really is. And I'll say this publicly, if I had to choose between Township and my last place employment, I'll take Township every day of the week and twice on Sundays. This is truly an amazing, awesome place, and the next two years, we're going to get even better. That's just what's going to happen. But you know what? There are processes across the board, processes are not people. You know, in football games, Eddie mentioned football games, we had like four fights the first football game, we sat down as a team, we walked the football stadium, we figured out all of our problem areas, we roped them off, and knock on wood, we haven't had a problem, sorry, I got wood here, we haven't had a big problem at a football game, really, the remainder of the year. But that, all that took was just good people walking around, so there's just a ton of great people. Thanks Scott.
I don't think that, that progress is linear either. I mean, I feel like I tell my students that a lot, that, you know, sometimes you, you have to take a couple steps back, and you see where the problems are, and sometimes they can get worse before they get better, and it, you know, it was rocky, you walked into a situation where there was a lot of change that, that was kind of on the verge of happening anyway, and I, I think everybody working together towards that is, is the best thing possible. I, I think honestly, even though there's been snafus and difficulties, it's going in the right direction.
Yeah.
I really do, I think that, I think that we're headed in the right direction.
I do too.
Go ahead.
All right, well, I'm probably going to regret this, but I'll, I'll engage Mr. Lucchini. I, I believe that we do need change too, and I do think that Dr. Hibbs is the guy to do. That's all.
Thanks man.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
No, go ahead.
I'm just going to keep it short, kind of short. Room wasn't built a day. This man hasn't even been here for six months, and he's already implementing changes that are pushing our district in a positive way. I know that there are people that don't like change, sometimes the old school way is better, not all the time. He has kept some of the old school methods, but it's time, it is time to quote-unquote "get with the times," and this man's moving in the right direction, that's why I voted for him. He's got, he's got my support, and I got his back, and I hope that the rest of the public will realize that in the coming months, in the coming years, you're definitely going to see a change in this, in this district for the better, and I really hope that you'll continue to support him.
Thanks Sean.
All right, well, I'll close it out, I'm not going to say too much, because I think everyone said a lot of great things, but the reason why I ran for the board was for change. I think we have a great start with having Dr. Hibbs here, I think when we all got together and went through the interviews, it was very clear to us that Dr. Hibbs was the right choice for Washington Township, so I'm super happy to have him here to help. I think more and more, we see a lot of students in the room, I can't even say kids anymore, because you're not, you're certainly young adults, and we have a lot of student participation, and I think there's a lot of change, right, that we could do as a board to hold ourselves accountable for proper behavior, and the way we interact with others, and in public. And, you know, I think that, for us, change is inevitable, right? I mean, we have a lot of different groups of students coming in, that we have to evolve and change and meet their needs. And things have changed from when I graduated, and embarrassing to say '91, but things have changed, right? So, we have to change, I know, do the calculations, it's a lot. So, you know, I'm just, I'm happy that we have Dr. Hibbs here, I think as a board, we could do a better job working together, and making sure the public sees the, some of the great work that we are doing. So, whatever that amounts to in November is a good thing, I just hope that we can all continue to work together, because we have to. So, all right?
Thanks Carol.
Anybody else? Okay. I don't have any other yellow cards, so I'm going to close unless someone else wants to pop up. No? All right, motion to close the public?
Second.
All right. All right. Motion to approve the report of the superintendent, items one through five.
Second.
Discussion?
Is number five?
So, we did not.
That needs to be polled, right?
Yeah, so we did not get to the settlement agreement, it was on executive, but we ran over.
Okay, thank you.
So, we need to poll, but then we probably need to come back to approve. So, when we come back in, yeah, so we can.
We're about to break go executive and then come back.
And take action.
So, we're just voting on one through four.
Yes.
This is, this is something that's different from.
We didn't discuss yet.
We did not yet discuss this this evening.
All right, good, good catch. All right, so let me reset. Motion to, motion to approve the report of the superintendent, items one through four.
Still move. Second.
Discussion? Thanks Scott. All right, roll call.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Moving on to instructional affairs, motion to approve items one through three.
Second.
Discussion?
Just got a quick question. Mr. Garvis, can you be able to answer this? Are you only looking to implement one, one pit at Bells, or are you going for multiple?
No pit.
I think you should, I think you should have multiple. I'll tell you what, like.
I'll let the scouts know.
Dude, I'll tell you what, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I'm, I'm a full proponent of it, I mean, I had it when I was younger, and I went to school when I, and I had camp, that was the most, I'm telling you, that game is, you can get intense, and I'm telling you right now, to implement this, at this school, I'm hoping that it will grow within the district, because, I mean, you can just have full-blown tournaments and just go at it, and it's great.
Have a board event, Gaga tournament.
Yo, you don't want none of this, trust me. But no, that's awesome that you're going to put that together.
Lots of Gaga for you, Sean Mary Gaga.
Very good, thank you. It sounds like Sean wants to participate.
Yes, I do.
You'll be at the ribbon, you're at the ribbon cutting.
That's what I say all the time.
Nice, anybody else? All right, okay, all right, roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
All right, moving on to policy, for a second reading, motion to approve policy, items number one through 18.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call. Roll call.
Ms. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. Moving on to student activities, communications, motion to approve items one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. Moving on to human resources. Motion to approve items one through 46.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Yep.
Just a general comment, right? I think on some of the salaries and things that they, without getting into specifics, they are well advertised and we're just dealing with the function of the times of shortage of teachers needing to pay for what's out there.
Oh, yeah. There's a massive, there's a massive teacher shortage across the entire United States, and what you're seeing is, is that you're seeing hard-to-fill positions like Spanish. People are commanding way more than a starting step-one salary. They're just laughing at it and saying no. And it really ends up being a mad scramble to try to get these types of employees. It's very sad. Sad that we can't have a competitive market, but the reality is, is that you're going to probably see some people come on at a little bit higher than we have in the past just because we can't get people and we need staff to teach children. That's really what we're seeing.
Anybody else?
Do you have a comment? Again, at the school boards, this came up. I spent a lot of time in teacher recruitment and retention. And one of the things that came out is that right now, we currently have a 2% cap. Districts can't go over that. I mean, they can go up to 2% without going to the public. If they go over, they have to go to the public. And basically, what's coming out of this in terms of the demand that teachers are asking for salaries is that not only Washington Township, but districts across the state are not going to be able to pay this kind of money. So, it seems to me, from what I heard there, there's going to be a push to try to get rid of the 2% cap so that districts can sustain the kind of salaries that they're paying people. So, that might be coming down the road. We'll be paying more in our taxes because we just can't, we just can't afford it. Not only Washington Township, it's throughout the state, is what I understood. I just have a question. I wonder, do we have a plan right now about how we're going about trying to get people? I know I saw it on the website, you know, we have it right there, front and center. As soon as you go on, you know, we're hiring people. But is there anything that we're attempting to do to outline what we're going to try to do to get people? For instance, this is the second year now that we're having a problem in technology. What about the schools that are actually producing students? Are we going to them now and trying to see if we can get them to come to Washington Township? I'm just wondering, are we looking towards a comprehensive plan of how we're addressing recruitment and retention?
Yeah, absolutely. Why don't, rather than me spitballing here, Sean, why don't you put together something for the board, and then we'll update them about all the great things that you're engaging in, and we'll do it in a systems way.
Okay, sounds great.
Yeah, of course.
Anybody else? All right, roll call.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Epstein, number 40, and yes, to the left.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. Moving on to finance.
Can I just, I'm sorry, on number 38, can we just give a little shout out to Ms. God, if I'm going to blast her name, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, too.
Ms. Preleterra, she was teacher assistant, G-Tech, back to December 31st, 26 years. Thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sean. Where were we? Finance. Motion to approve under finance, items one through 30.
So moved. Second.
All right, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Stain from number seven, initials E-H, yes, everything else.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. Moving on to special education, motion to approve items one through 11.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. All right, we have nothing under negotiations. New business of the board?
I'd just like to make a comment for Mrs. Wector. Thank you for getting back to me. I brought up at the last meeting that although we have an MOA for the teachers and the support staff, there's no signed contract, but thank you for updating us.
Sure. Any other new business? Nothing? All right. All right, motion to open the public for second comment?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we are in open. I have one card. Okay. Ron Lucarini?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up because it was interesting, the commentary. I'm going to go on record and say, and this, like I told Dr., not Dr. Bolendorf, but Mr. Bolendorf, five or six years, seven years ago, Dr. Hibbs is telling you that if the slate, the political slate that's running and the other woman who's running independently, but as, she's politically, she's the darling of the far right, the Ku Klux Brigade, okay? If those three people get on, I'm telling you that we're going to be back here in three years at the same place. I don't care what anybody else says. Mr. Lindsay could say what he wants. Mr. Tomzak could say what he wants. They ran as children-first, or as I like to call them, children-last candidates. And let me tell you something. If something comes up where, let's just say, Remington and Vernick, the engineering firm, is in competition with another reputable engineering firm, and they vote against Remington and Vernick, they're not going to have the same job in their union that they have right now, I can guarantee you. Okay? So, that's what it's all about with these guys. So, as long as politics, you know, they're doing a decent job now because they're buffered with these other people. But you get a majority of them back on there, and you're going to have Julie Cosempel, too. That's what you're going to have, and they will fall into line no matter what they say right now. They have great intentions. I think Mr. Lindsay's been a pretty decent board member since he's been on air. But that's all going to change if the politics are first, and that's what you can have. You can have disagreements. Mr. La Liberty makes a statement, this is months ago, he said, "We need to tighten things up," right? "We need to tighten things up." The next thing you know, Baker and Clancy are going over to high school. They come back the next month and they tell us how wonderful everything is at the high school. Now, we hear about the fights, we hear about the fights at the football game. Obviously, we needed to tighten some things up, you know? That doesn't mean that you're a conservative, stuck-in-the-mud person. Somebody said, "We need to take a few steps back." Yeah, maybe we should go back to the way some things were in the 1970s, the 1980s. I don't agree with, you know, cell phones in the hallways even, okay? I think it's, I thought I don't agree with cell phones in the hallways anywhere, whether it's a school system or a place of, you know, a place of business or a work. Because I think it's taken away from communication between people, all right? Kids are in their phones. Adults are in their phones as well, all right? And I think we need to do a better job of communication, especially since we're so polarized politically, even on a national level. And that stuff adds to it. But I'm just making my statements because I want to be on record. I don't want to have to keep coming to board meetings because I'm not going to come to any more board meetings. I'm going to watch what happens this next election, and if those three people get on the Board of Education, you're going to have problems continually. Because now you're going to have a majority, and this majority doesn't care about anything but their own personal agendas and/or their personal politics. And that's the way it is. There's a few that care about their own personal agendas. We had one person who got all upset because I wrote something on the internet, or I mean, on my email list, about a kid who got special treatment because of his relationship with this particular person. I didn't even identify the kid, but I heard from her friends and a lot of other people that she went nuts over this, okay? Well, just put yourself in the place of Angelina Chilla. Her kid, I mean, Angelina Chilla was told, "You don't belong in the honor society," and we found out factually that she really did. In fact, we found out 40 other kids did, too, all right? But they didn't care, seemed to care about that when that happened, all right? So, that's what you're going to have on this Board of Education. Mark my words. Thank you.
Just real quick, I want to clarify. We went to this school last year. Not this school year, last year.
Okay, Mrs. Clancy?
Get your facts straight. Get your facts straight. Yeah, get your facts straight.
I'll say just a few things, and then we'll move on. My experiences with Mr. Lindsay and Mr. Tomzak have been right down the middle about what's best for this district and what's best for kids. 100%. That's, and it can't get any more than that. So, thank you. And no board member at this dais went nuts in any way, shape, or form. Period. So...
I'd like to reiterate that, that it's been a pleasure working with them since they've been on the board, absolutely getting to know them and working with them.
All right.
Are you going to comment?
About what?
Telegraphers.
Dave, you can go ahead.
I just wanted to say, this doesn't affect anything with our real employment. Like, we're here volunteers. It don't really think, like, it's not, really doesn't affect my employment. Like, I'm pretty happy before I got on the board. I'm pretty happy when I leave, too.
Yeah, I'm going to reiterate that, too. I mean, just because, you know, okay, yeah, I have a union affiliation. I'm proud to be a union member. It doesn't affect my job at all. I'm completely subjective. I'm open to everybody's suggestions and opinions. And quite frankly, I appreciate the compliment that Lucarini gave me, but I really don't think this election's going to alter anything. I think that the path that we're going down right now with the crew that we have now and with the potential new crew coming in, partially that we have, this district's going to move forward in the right direction regardless of who we have because we've got the administration that's going to push forward. We've got the teachers. Thank God bless you guys for what you do. I know you guys don't probably get the acknowledgement you guys deserve, but I can't do what you guys do. And that's a huge, huge plus for this district. So, with the administration, with this current board, we're moving forward, you know, regardless of what happens in November.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to speak. Yeah, I just want to comment, Mr. Lucarini's reference to a school board member and an email chain that he had. Basically, he was trying to point that I was trying to get personal favors for a grandchild. I was concerned, I wasn't concerned about my grandson, him saying anything about him. I was concerned about the fact that it was an indictment on Chestnut Ridge Administration that they weren't doing their job. And Dr. Hibbs did investigate, and I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Yeah. I guess, here's what I'll say. Yeah. In no way did Mrs. Baker ask or get any specific or special treatment for any family member, nor has she ever done that in any way, shape, or form. You know, the emails that went around made references. We did internal conversations, and quite frankly, a lot of what was written in emails was categorically not true. So, that's what I'll say.
Thank you for taking the time.
Of course.
To the administration of Chestnut Ridge.
I have to comment because I would be crazy not to at this point. I think it's always a good thing to leave children out of conversations, and I think that we should be consistently supportive of that, right? So, not just this time, but any time in the past, right? So, I just want to mark the moment to say, anytime a kid is brought up at the podium, where I've resisted for many months now, we should all be appalled when a student is talked about at the podium, period, because they are children. So, I would have loved to have had the support that you just had as well, because we shouldn't be talking about students ever.
I agree 100%.
Ever.
Because we didn't get that 100% support, so...
And I don't need it now. I'm just making a point to say that when we talk about children, they're children, and they don't deserve to be brought up in a public light in any negative way because they're children.
Yep.
Okay? So, enough said. Marcy Dewey?
Hi. So, I was up here in September, so here I am again. It's October. So, I want to follow up with some of the stuff that I mentioned in September to see how things are going. So, how's our basketball net going at Bunker Hill? Happening, not happening?
As of right now, it's not a priority.
Okay. I'm just covering all my...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I'm glad that, Carol, that you asked again about showing the split for lunch for Power School because that was a concern that was bought up, so I want to make sure that that's still on the radar. I was happy to see dates for articles on the website, so I was glad to see that. And Connie talked about pre-kindergarten, so that one's done. When it comes to all the stuff with the student choice, with the names and the pronouns and all that stuff, Dr. Hibbs, you said that if a parent calls the teacher, the teacher will go to guidance. What's the next step?
I'm going to make sure all your questions are asked in one.
Okay. And then, there was mention about, a couple of years ago, they took away class rank, so the kids weren't allowed to see what their class rank was, not as a percentage, but as the direct number. Are we going to put that back? Because I feel like that's something that students are legally allowed to know. So, could be wrong, but kind of was making sure to see if that's out there. And then, how are we doing with the grading policy and the minimum grades? Like, is that still going on or has that been situated? Because I haven't heard anything about that. So, I think that's it.
Is that it? All your questions?
That's it. I'm going to hold off on the other ones because they're not really. So, that's it.
Okay, so no more questions for you? Okay, want to make sure. All right, got it. We'll respond.
Okay.
Dr. Hibbs?
Caught me off guard a little bit with the basketball one. So, went to Mr. Distillio. We talked about it briefly, and he didn't love a lot of the areas that it would be, and we kind of just really haven't followed back up after that. Class rank, yes. Class rank, we keep. Class rank is a student record. You're going to see a policy revision that any parent or guardian or child that wants to know their class rank, we will absolutely let them know. We're not going to put class rank and publish it, but if a parent or guardian or child wants to know, they certainly can do that because we keep it as a student record. Grading policy, I think, meets this Wednesday internally. Dr. Nathan? So, stay tuned for that conversation. And I don't recall saying anything about pronouns in public. However, maybe you can catch me after and we can have a conversation. I can understand more of what you're saying. I think they hit them all, four. And everything else you want me to look into as well?
All right. I don't have any additional yellow cards, so I assume no one else wants to speak. So, I'm going to, motion to close to public? We're not going to adjourn the meeting because we have to go back into executive, and we are taking action.
May take action, yeah.
Yeah. So, for members of the public and those watching at home, the board is going to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters, student matters, and to receive attorney-client advice. The board will not take any formal action while it is in executive session. There may be formal action after executive session is over. Once executive session is over, the board's going to come back into public session, and they may vote on a specific item or matter, taking formal action at that time. So, just to be clear, nothing's going to happen while we're in executive session. If anything does happen, it will be done once we return to the public session. It'll be done in the sunshine. Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll just give like a few minutes. So, I'm going to say informally, the meeting's adjourned, because I can't take a motion to do it. We're just going to give a few minutes. Marcy, if you want to follow up with Dr. Hibbs before we go into executive, thank you all for coming.
We do need a motion to go into executive.
We do? Sorry.
Yeah.
30 minutes? Yeah. Thank you.
Hopefully less.
Motion to go into executive? Okay. Thank you, everyone.
You think less than 30?
Yeah, I think 30 is good. Yeah, I think, I think thirty's good.
All right, we're back in public. Motion to approve number five. Settled an agreement?
Settled.
Seconded.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo? Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Chua?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
So noted.
All right, thanks everyone.